Meeting room will come to order. We're now holding the August 12th, 2024 meeting of the Cumberland County Fiscal Court, 4:00 PM Central Time, 3rd floor of the Cumberland County Courthouse. This time, I'll ask our magistrate from District 3 if he would lead us in a word of prayer.
Let's pray. Good gracious, Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day that you're blessed with, we thank you, Father, for watching us, keeping us safe, Lord, through this day, Lord, allowing us to wake. Thank you for the help, Lord, as you bless us with, Lord, each and every day. Just ask that you'll just lead and guide each one here, Lord, to do the right things, Lord, I pray, and Lord will give you the glory, Father, for that, Lord. Fathers, we try to carry out the county's business, Lord, again here tonight, Lord, we just ask that you'll just lead and guide us, give us the wisdom and knowledge, Lord, that we need, Lord, to always do the right thing, Lord, Father. We ask, Lord, forgiveness of our sins and all of our shortcomings. We ask, Father, special prayer for the ones that's in hospital beds, Lord, and are sick, Lord, we just ask that you'll just lay your healing hand upon them, strengthen them, be with the family, and which, Lord, also, Lord, is the trial of mercy, Lord, I ask. We pray, Father, special prayer for this nation, Lord, Lord, and just ask, Lord, that you'll lead and guide the ones that are in flu, sick, or ill, Lord, and help them, Lord, in making the correct decisions, Lord, I ask, and Lord will give you the praise, Father, for what I've... Again, we just thank you for this day, thank you, Miss Lord, for the day that you're blessed with, Lord, and we ask Jesus' names in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, magistrate District 3. At this time, I'll ask our professional athletes in the room, if you would all please rise, they'll lead us in a pledge to the flag. Thank you very much, you may be seated. The honorable magistrate from District 3 just said something that I agree with, he said that's the best pledge of allegiance we've had in 18 months, so I appreciate that very, very much. We'll now move into roll call, this will also serve as a mic check, remember, gentlemen, be close to your mics if you would when you speak. Magistrate District 1.
Here.
Magistrate District 2.
Here.
Magistrate District 3.
Here.
Magistrate District 4.
Here.
County Attorney Coleman Hurt.
Here.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much for being here. We'll now move into what we call the departmental reports and public official reports, this is the opportunity that you all have as taxpayers to hear from all of the folks, the county elected officials or appointed officials in Cumberland County. I'll ask our road supervisor, Mr. Ricky Mountain, if you would, please come forward with your report first.
Today, in the morning, we actually have a good crowd, we have a lot of athletes here, a lot of people, probably, everything's going pretty good with the road, the parking, getting on schedule, moving, we're moving on, we'll be starting different roads within the long problem, but, uh, together. Quickly, this, you know, we have a minor breakdown and stuff like that, but, uh, these stones flattered it, so, again, the, it's dried up a little bit, so, again, the steps are looking forward, I have to relax on it, so, that's good.
Any questions for our road supervisor? Thank you very much, Ricky. And in my haste to get to the departmental reports, I skipped over the minutes, gentlemen, so at this time, you've got two sets of minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the first set of minutes from our regularly scheduled meeting on July the 8th, if there's one from the court at this time. So moved by the magistrate from District 3, second by the magistrate of District 1, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion passes. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes as submitted on July the 19th, that's a special call meeting.
So moved.
So moved by the magistrate of District 3, is there a second?
Second.
Second by the magistrate of District 2, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion passes. EM Director, Mr. Greg Carey, if you would, please come forward for your report.
On July 9th, 1:27 PM, the Hook County River tornado, one. Of course, we've had four tornadoes in the western two. At 3:15 PM, the county was highly tornado warning and clear. The summary from National Oil Service Storm Survey, the Cumberland County Merced Division, determined that a brief EFSR tornado touched down on the afternoon of July 9th. The tornado touched down about a half mile north northwest of Hollywood County and Percy Ford, where two large trees were down in facing the southeast position, just down the stream of that arisen. This is where the tornado reached its widest and most aggressive point. The EFSR tornado was on the ground for just under one mile with a maximum width of 200 meters. There was more damage that made it look like 70 to 80 mile an hour winds. This storm hit the Percy Ford area open, where reports indicate it did not have any injuries or fatalities during this event. Special thanks to all the birth responders who kept us safe during these storms, this time of all this shit.
With the, uh, the sirens, the warning sirens in Maribor, it's, it will sound, but if the receiver's out, I actually had a conversation with the people who sent it off, getting prepared today, um, they're, they're gonna send it off, and, uh, the, it will still sound, uh, Maribor Park Department, uh, there's a member that lives there, really, really close, and if he goes, if we go in under a warning, he will be around, and he's, he's gonna flip the switch, and it will go to, it's done. But one thing to remember about that, outdoor warnings devices, is that in and of itself, what it says, that, for outdoors, you register your phone with CORID, regardless whether you're close enough to hear your hump, you will get notified at the same time that the sirens sound. Uh, so that's, you can enter Cumberland, KY, all lowercase, no space, to 99411, and that will register you, you can register your home phone, your cell phone, there's no limit of numbers you can put in.
And they text that, right?
They, they text and they talk, and if you sign the pre-mail, you get the email also. And the safety room in, in Maribor, uh, have a conversation with them, with the radio frequencies and stuff, the transponder been ordered, that will activate, where we can unlock the door from dispatch, like we sent the sirens to dispatch, and once that gets in, I, I think all the construction is done, we're just waiting on that to be the final piece of the puzzle, and we can't, until that comes in, we can't, we can't say it.
Any questions for our EM Director? Thank you very much, Greg. ABC Officer, Mr. Junior Smith.
David.
David. Month of 10, our cost saves, $248,609.30. Regulatory fees for month of June, $11,887.72. Year-to-date, $27,858.58.
Any questions for our ABC Officer? Thank you very much, Junior. Jailer, Mr. Thomas J. Brown.
Thomas J. Brown, I'm a county attorney. We had a total, a total of July, 51 runs, 43 to Adar, two to Plank, four to Taylor, one to Warren, one to Jackson, Tennessee, for a total of 3,263 miles. As of first day of the month, we had 25 in Adar County, as of today, we have 29. First day of July, total of eight home horse races, for 121 days, saved the county approximately $4,114 of jail pay.
Any questions, gentlemen, for our jailer? Mr. Jailer, I do have an update for you, I promised you at the last meeting that we would take a look into what you had brought up then with respect to the repairs that were made to your car, can't take credit for this most recent bit of good news, the county attorney spoke with me right before the meeting and told me that we do have confirmation that a check is forthcoming, is that correct, Mr. County Attorney?
It's been paid.
It has been paid for the amount of the damages, so this is just a matter of time, we appreciate the county attorney's work, I appreciate the work of those ladies in the office looking into it, and just to be clear on kind of where the hangup was there, the paperwork that was originally submitted to us, it's an estimate on it, anytime that it says estimate, insurance won't pay unless it actually says invoice for actual repairs, so hopefully we're to the bottom of this one, we've got it done, appreciate your patience with us, and...
The COVID period worked hard, it's one I feel I've done, and, you know, handling matters, one day it's concerned, about it, you know, I just hate that, oh, it waits a long for some money, I mean, that's not even about a third month.
We appreciate that very much, Mr. Jailer, thank you.
I'm gonna thank Sheriff Department for all the help, keep the stuff paid.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, Dr.
Berksville Mayor Laurel Irving. Sheriff Keaton Williams.
So the first thing I'd like to report on is dispatch on Wednesday, what was going on, the police security officer, Stacy Norris, failed him to us, so, we transported him to the hospital, to make a long story short, grand, transported him to the Long Green Medical Center, I rode ambulance with him. Uh, we can keep him in our prayers, he had some kind of procedure today, I won't talk about it, it's all too much science for me, but tomorrow, he, if everything goes as planned, he'll have a triple bypass surgery, so he was a lot worse off than what we thought. I'd like to think the rubber part first sprained, it handled a lot of force, it looks 10 pounds better. Uh, just to go over July activity, we had a total of 300 calls per service, a total of 311 traffic stops, which led to approximately 8 DUIs, 12 drug arrests, 49 missing lanes traffic salutations, we had 32 alcohol and bomb calls, and there were 14 warrants served along with nine criminal salutations that was non-traffic, so, I love it.
Any questions for the sheriff? Thank you very much, sir, appreciate what you do. County Court Clerk Brian Morgan. PBA Gina Shay Watson. County Coroner Gary White. County Attorney Coleman Hurt.
Nothing to report.
Civics Club Deputy Judge Executive, Mr. Aiden Cass.
Since the previous district report meeting, the Cumberland County interns and citizens have participated in the chamber meeting, tours of meeting, and elaborate board meeting, we participated in USDA commodity food handout, we give 148 of our constituents. We also participated in road viewing, and a few weeks ago, Lancer Paul was down in their county, went up there and visited with him at his, during his speech. Also, upcoming on August 20th, we plan on going back to Lake Cumberland Community, Lake Cumberland Development District, and testify, well, not testifying, achieving our goal for Civics Club, these goals include a Civics Club in every school within our region within the next two years, at least, at least one Civics Club within each area development district within the next two years, and more teenage and more group of youth supporting the work of the local fiscal courts, councils, and ADD, ADDDSs, and help to establish 20 county slash city internship programs across Kentucky to encourage youth participation and help the civs guard public services by December 2027.
Very good, any questions for our Deputy Judge of the Civics Club? Thank you very much, sir. Now, at this point, while several of you are here today, we will have a special recognition of an individual who is in college and celebrating a great deal of success, and then several younger individuals well on their way to, it sounds like collegiate sports, so we'll begin with the individual, I will, at this time, ask, when I call the name of this young lady, if she would please stand and remain standing until I close with the letter, and then we give her a round of applause. August 12th, 2024, to whom it may concern, this letter of recognition serves as notice to the residents of Cumberland County and all taxpayers herein, that the Cumberland County Fiscal Court and the staff thereof are incredibly proud of Ms. Rodeo Kentucky, Zoe Norris, for proudly serving the entire state during her 2024 term. Zoe is a third-generation horsewoman and fifth-generation farmer and rancher, she has completed her junior year at the University of Kentucky, majoring in animal science. In 2020, Zoe was the recipient of the Kentucky Equine Education Scholarship. Zoe is a co-owner of a waste management business illustrating her interest in entrepreneurship and her desire to give back to her community. Even with this hectic schedule and various obligations, Zoe is actively pursuing her goal to complete a certification in equine chiropractic. We are excited to watch Zoe use her education to become a trainer and professional in the horse racing industry. As members of the Cumberland County Fiscal Court, we congratulate Zoe on her success, we thank her for the positive example she has sent and the positive attention she has earned for our small Kentucky town. You have made Cumberland County very proud. I didn't ask Zoe or our athletes, but I imagine anybody who wants autographs or pictures afterward, I'm sure they will stay and, and do that also. August 12th, 2024, to whom it may concern, this letter of recognition serves as notice to the residents of Cumberland County and all taxpayers herein, that the Cumberland County Fiscal Court and staff thereof are incredibly proud of the recent accomplishments of the 8U Babe Ruth Berksville All-Stars. Members of the team include Anniston Cooksey, Ryland Kessinger, Jessley Irwin, Riley Walker, Reagan Barton, Kara Murphy, Aubrey Kilman, Julia Rogers, McKenna Staley, Bella Greider, Emmeline Hall, and Harlow Flowers. The team is led by Tabitha Cooksey, Jeremy Cooksey, Bradley Kessinger, and A.J. Weis. This team has proven that daily discipline and constant commitment to one another elevates the entire group to new levels. These ladies are indeed young, but their kind actions and professionalism are something all ages would do well to follow. These individuals support each other, encourage one another, and when someone gets down, they don't stay, they don't stay there for very long with these friends around to lift them up. As a result, these athletes have earned national attention for a fourth-place finish at the 8U World Series in Alabama. In addition to the team accomplishment, the following players were named as Players of the Game during the tournament, Anniston Cooksey, twice, Julia Rogers, twice, Jessley Irwin, Reagan Barton, Kara Murphy, and Harlow Flowers. Jessley Irwin was also named to the Rawlings All-Golden Glove Team. As members of the Cumberland County Fiscal Court, we congratulate the team and their coaches on these accomplishments, and thank them for the positive example they have set for their peers and for each of us. You have made Cumberland County very proud. Now, what I will say to everyone here before we take about a 30-second recess, I would like to let you all know that anybody who's here representing these youth, I appreciate not only what you're doing by being here and showing your encouragement and support of them, but what you did to get them here today, not just to show up, but all of the work that it took for this accomplishment. What we plan to do on the wall to my left and your right, our Cumberland County interns are working now, they've got everything framed up to this point, it's just a matter of getting them on the wall now, we will have all of these letters of recognition on that wall so that one day, when each and every one of you are, are a member of this court or judge executive or a public elected official, you'll be able to come up here and say, "Look at me then." So I hope that you all will take us up on that offer, circle back around when you're public officials, mom, dads, pa, grandmas, I hope you'll do the same. At this time, I'll allow for roughly a 30-second break for anybody who needs to leave before we get into the rest of the meeting, if you wish to stay, feel free to do so, but we understand you have obligations, so we'll pause for about 30 seconds. At this time, I will ask the Cumberland County Water District Board members and representatives, if you all would please come forward to the podium. Next item on our agenda, under old business, the only item under old business, is Cumberland County Water District Board's 704 project updates. At the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, you all had graciously agreed to send to us some financials to go over the project, I think you all were still working on those last time, I would like if you or your engineer would please, now that we have received it, if you will cover that set of paperwork with us, we would appreciate it.
Boy Norris, Chairman of Cumberland County Water District, this time, I'll ask David to go through the numbers with y'all, so that each and every one of you can understand.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And David, if you would, when you come forward, make sure that mic is turned on for us.
Got it. What I have is the budget to be proposed for the connector with Adar County Water District, and the construction cost was solicited us by Stoss Construction Company, their actual cost is supposed to be $263,600. Our engineering fee is $1,700, and the construction inspection that will be provided by us is $10,505, that leaves us a total of $286,805. And, uh, what we were hoping for on the financing is, we think that we're gonna have about $105,000 left over on the Warsaw branch project, we won't know that number for sure until we finish, we should finish by the end of the month, we'll be somewhere in that range, and then we were hoping to transfer the art funds that were initially designated for the Maribor project to this project in the amount of $182,295. So, the total project cost matched just the total of financing, the reason it does that is, we have agreed to discount our engineering fee by about 50% for the project because we've worked for Cumberland County for so long, and what we looked at is the amount of money that was available versus what it was gonna cost to construct it, and the difference left would be the part that we would take, about half what we originally promised, so...
So your engineering fees, if I understood, you said they're 50% of what you would originally have...
Yes, sir. And that fee is generated through a contract that's written by USDA, that's not something that we come up with arbitrarily, that's a, uh, big schedule that USDA provides, or else that we all about. So that's where we are, and I guess, we're in hopes that, uh, our money for Maribor is still available, that amount?
I don't recall the amount right off the top of my head, remember, and I think we've all had this discussion in Water Board, I know they, they've agreed to, it was 90% of the, uh, Maribor project cost because of the transaction and the...
Administrative fees?
Yes, thank you very much, sir, but that, that number looks close to what we had on the Maribor project, yep.
So we, we should know by the end of the month where we are exactly with money?
That would be wonderful, and I think, Mr. Chairman, this may be a question more for you, the, or the county attorney, the document that you all have drafted and are executing with Adar County Water, in the last meeting, we had that down, that, per the motion, we needed that signed before we moved forward, but that is in process or completed, right?
It has been completed.
Been completed. Excellent, I appreciate that, if I could get that then before you all leave, that would be great, and then what we will do from here, uh, we will have the papers drafted on our side to de-obligate and then re-obligate for that project, if it be the will of the court, yes, this is perfect. Mr. County, hold on. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I'd like to speak directly to the jail, I want to, the magistrate, District 4, I want to assure you that all money for Maribor, that your project will be completed.
Now, say the name.
We're gonna take care of it.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much, Mr. Chairman.
To the magistrate of District 1, Ronald, and that when we get this closed out and everything, we're gonna take care of that project up on 704, make sure that those people get the water, we get a stable water, the water, that, you know, we've had a lot of storms, and a lot of unforeseen problems, but this will give us another source of water from Adar County, and then hopefully it'll fix the problem no doubt.
And Mr. Chairman, can you speak to, or the engineer either, this 704 project, I've been told, is different than projects in, well, St. Maribor, because there's a different amount of rock, will you touch on that with respect to price?
I can, uh, there are two methods that we looked at for the installation of water line, one was the open trench method, where we would dig an open trench about 18 inches wide, 48 inches deep, and then we also looked at the directional board, uh, when we met with the Department of Highway Permit Engineer, they, they asked us to consider the directional board method, uh, to maintain integrity of the current road, and I agree with them, and I think our contractor even issued a statement saying that it was easier to fit the directional board rather than the open cut method, because all the material that would be excavated would have to be removed from the site, new material were unpacked, approximately 50%, new material, and some of that would be used, and in addition to that, we were, we would have to enroll considerably, so, with that, that's why we're taking the directional board, and how it armed, it issued us a permit to do it that way.
And we do expect this to be completed, if approved, we expect this to be completed by winter time, right?
Yes, sure.
Questions from members of the court for the Water District?
Say thank you, I'm sure it'll be...
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
I got one real quick, to clear something up, I think it's been a big, a four-inch gate valve, $3,000, but that's not just for a gate valve, I mean, Ted, will you explain what all goes into, into that estimate?
The excavation of that gate valve is difficult because of how much area we have to expose and how deep it has to go, so, that price is a little bit higher than what we normally see, but the conditions of where the work's gonna take place is more difficult than what we normally see.
But that's for labor, that's not just for a gate valve, I mean, that's a lot more...
No, that's a lot more for labor installation, yes.
Any other questions for members of the court? Thank you all very much for being here. Moving on to the next item of business, under new business, budget transfers, budget transfers, at this time, I will entertain a motion to accept those budget transfers as submitted on the page in front of you.
Motion.
So moved by the magistrate of District 1, is there a second?
Second.
Second by the magistrate of District 3, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, no, motion passes. Gentlemen, moving into your next item in the packet, this is the warrants, this is our bills that we have to pay, I'll entertain a motion to pay the bills for the money.
So moved.
So moved by the magistrate of District 3, is there a second?
Second.
Second by the magistrate of District 1, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, no, motion passes. Moving into letter three, under new business, at this time, I'll ask Mr. Tyler Thacker, our Civics Club EM Director, to come forward. Tyler, my understanding, you have been heading up a lot of the reorganizing here in the office, you've moved a lot of things, helped clear up a lot of things, redo a lot of things with the rest of the interns for this summer, you have a recommendation for the court on a couple items to surplus, is that correct? Could you tell us what those items are?
It's the two cabinets over there, and then the small cabinet right here.
So, two bookshelves with measurements on them, and then one file cabinet, is that correct? Gentlemen, any questions for Tyler giving the recommendation? And Tyler, one of the reasons for that is, we don't have the room, and you've checked with everybody in the office, we don't have another use for those here, is that correct? So, gentlemen, with that recommendation, I'll entertain a motion to surplus the two bookshelves and a file cabinet.
So moved.
So moved by the magistrate of District 3, is there a second? Second by the magistrate of District 2, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Next thing, under Internship Program, I would like to, just for a moment, brag on this group of young leaders, and we've got a couple that aren't here with us that have helped out this summer, too. They have done a tremendous job this summer. They have gotten a lot of attention across the county, across the region, across the state, and even some of our federal colleagues are commenting on what a good job they've done and what a difference they're making here locally. August the 20th was mentioned by our deputy judge in his report. I cannot overstate the importance of that meeting for the youth in Cumberland County, and frankly, the youth across the region. Cumberland County, in a good way, is leading the pack and at the top of the list for our civics club and our internship program. That is in very, very large part thanks to the gentlemen on this court. I appreciate that very much, the school board, site-based decision-making council, and absolutely each and every member of the civics club and all of our interns. You all have worked hard, and if August the 20th goes well on your pitch to them, I do expect that you will start seeing civics clubs and county and city internship programs popping up across our region and across this state with each of you serving as ambassadors to those programs. I'll also mention, for those that are watching online later and those that are here, these young leaders, as a result of what they've accomplished, have been asked to join our program directors at the regional level in Frankfurt next spring to testify about this program, because we are getting investments from folks at the federal and the state level here in Cumberland County to start what we hope starts a bit of a fire across the state. So I couldn't thank them enough and all of you all for supporting them from the very beginning. Members of the court, thank you for being integral in this process. Moving into letter... Any questions on that? Very good. Moving into letter D, 2023-2024 Cumberland County Conservation District Annual Report. If you would, please come forward with a representative. And gentlemen, you should have this report in your packet also.
Hello, I'm Jeff Rogers, and I'm the chairman of Cumberland County Conservation District. We turned our annual financial report, our annual report, we had delivered to the court here on July 26, 2024. And I'm wondering if you have any questions?
Any questions for the chairman on the report? Doesn't look like it, sir.
The next thing I'd like to bring up is your request for an increase. As of present time, we... Our tax base is at .02%, we're asking for an increase of .01%, which would increase us to .03%. We haven't had a tax increase even at 4% in 25 years. We've tried to keep from asking for money we didn't have to have, but because of inflation and the way things are going now, it's come to a point where we've got to do something. We are one of the only taxing bodies that actually brings income into account. As of so far, we have brought $3.6 million plus in payments through several different programs. And we, not just to farmers, we also have programs for anybody in the county to participate. All they need to do is participate. And we have seven local cost share programs, 21 environmental awareness program events each year. We have 12 education workshops, classes. We provide five pieces of farm equipment that we lease and rent out to farmers to use. We also have supplies that we distribute to the county and the passage for to build. We're involved in 10 school programs, and the office works with local, state, and federal programs also. We also co-sponsor the livestock disposal. And if you all have any questions, I want to ask.
Any questions for the chairman? We appreciate that. Now, to make sure that we've got the numbers right, Mr. Chairman, .02% at present.
Right.
.01% increase, making it a new .03% rate, correct? Okay.
We're the lowest taxing body in the county.
And we're talking about on the annual tax bills?
Right. Yeah, we don't get any money from anything except the annual tax, we're assessing it.
Any questions for the chairman? Any final questions for the chairman? Naturally, if you all have questions for the chairman or the group, I imagine they'll be here throughout the end of the meeting. And then I do think all of you all, or any of you all, would be willing to answer questions should the court think of them between now and the September meeting when we set these rates. So do keep that in mind. You've got some time to deliberate, but I know that they would be willing to answer the questions.
I would be glad to answer anything you have to ask.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to everybody else on the board for also being here. We appreciate that. Moving into the next item of business, identification of a building inspector. Gentlemen, you'll recall, at the last special call meeting, I brought up that the state had been down to pay us a visit just to check in with us. They notified us that we do not have anyone listed in Frankfurt as a building inspector for Cumberland County. Now, I know this gets a little murky here, because anytime somebody mentions building inspector, we start thinking about planning and zoning. I want to be crystal clear to everybody, this is not planning and zoning. We don't have planning and zoning in Cumberland County. The City of Berksville has a planning and zoning commission. We, on the county level, do not. This is not setting that up. This is simply identifying, per the state's request and direction, a building inspector. We've got two options, the way that the state has pitched it to us. We can either identify a contractor who has a certification as a building inspector, and that person will do the inspections for us, or we can go with the state, and the state will do the inspections. The issue with the state is that it takes longer. They've admitted that freely, that it will take much longer if they do the inspections. With respect to fees, it is my understanding that those don't change, with the exception of they could go down if the inspector at the regional level decides to charge less. They set maximum amounts that those inspectors can charge. They don't necessarily set minimum amounts, but maximum amounts there, so they could reasonably charge less. We do have the option, if we wanted to hire somebody full-time as a Cumberland County employee with retirement and benefits, I'm strongly recommending against that. We don't have enough development with cranes sitting all around Cumberland County and new businesses being built. I don't think that would be a positive return on investment for taxpayers. So we do have in front of us a proposal, if you will, from an inspector out of Barron County, Mr. James Griffith. I was speaking with some of the other county officials recently. He is actually an employee of the Barron County Fiscal Court, works full-time for them, and services several other counties outside of Barron County, outside of his normal hours. I've had a conversation with him. He is interested in it. He has a lake house here that is done or is working toward being done. So he visits Cumberland County regularly, but wanted to submit that document to you as a proposal, if we wish to go with him. Again, remembering your options. What's the will of the court, or what are the questions from the court?
I guess my question is, on the residential, out in the county, you don't have to be inspected when you build a barn or build it, whatever.
That's a very good question. Magistrate District Two has asked if you have to have a house inspected, a doghouse inspected, a barn, a shed. If it is for residential or private use, that is correct, you do not have to have it inspected. If it is for commercial use, you will need to have it inspected. Now, there are certain levels where even with a regional inspector, the state will still have to come in. I do believe that number is 20,000 square feet. When you hit 20,000 or more, we've got to have the state come in, because that takes us to a whole new level there. Anything under that, with few exceptions, we've got some leeway with a regional building inspector. Good question, magistrate District Two. Any other questions here? If not, I'll entertain a motion, per the guidance and request of the state building inspectors, to enter into a contract with Jim Griffith to take care of any of those inspections that were to arise and be needed in Cumberland County.
So moved.
So moved by the magistrate of District Three, is there a second?
Second.
Second by the magistrate of District One. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Letter F, the sheriff's settlement. I'll ask either the sheriff or Sarah, if you would, please come forward to present the settlement.
This is for the 2023 tax collection and disbursements. You'll notice on the... On the page, the first of all, franchise taxes. We collected $3.6 million, 98.12% of the taxes were collected, with a balance of 42 cents, and that's overpayment. That's where every day and a week or a month is rounded, so we overpaid the county 18 cents.
We appreciate that. Any questions for Sarah on the tax settlements?
Thank you, Sarah.
If not, I will entertain a motion to approve those as submitted.
Motion.
So moved by magistrate District Four, is there a second?
Second.
Second by the magistrate of District Two. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you, Sarah. Moving into letter G, under New Business, rules secondary road recommendations. This is what the state sends us every year. They have a rubric that they go over, making recommendations on which roads they're going to do. I've made a note there on your agenda, there is roughly one mile of road on Mud Camp that will be paved, roughly two miles of road on Little Runix Road that will be paved. So those are the two roads that the state plans to do. I'll entertain a motion and a second to allow them to do that in Cumberland County.
Motion.
So moved by the magistrate of District One, is there a second?
Second.
Second by the magistrate of District Four. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Letter H, District One. I'll now turn this over to you for a brief discussion on Lloyd Cemetery Road.
We have a bridge there. It's been condemned for a pretty good time, but we've not had the money to get involved to try to fix this bridge. So I'm asking the court to help me and try to get this bridge took care of, because it's leaning on one corner. Ricky could probably tell you more about this bridge than I can, but it's just a temporary bridge. It's put in, the original bridge completely fell in.
Ricky, can you speak to that down?
Yes, we had... It come down from the state. It had wooden floor, it had beams, it had wooden floor, it had concrete buttons, but it got really badly. And so we had bridge inspectors come and look at it, so they condemned it. And at that time, we had to try to get a temporary bridge put in. So we took some old arches that we had, and four buttons, set across there, something to get them in and out, because the wooden floor was terrible.
When was that done, Ricky?
That's probably at least five years ago.
Five or so years ago. So, Ronald, you all have been working on this for about five years?
Yes. And our cemetery, it's not a big cemetery, but it is a cemetery.
But the bridge that's there now, I know you mentioned the bridge was condemned. The prior bridge was, or you're telling me that the current bridge is condemned?
Prior.
The prior?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
We just put the temporary in, and we removed the old structure, so it didn't fog up the creek. The buttons and stuff, anyway, we just removed the steel beams and stuff, but it didn't affect it. So it's still a bridge we have, but it is just sitting there, expanding, it's probably a bit older. It's still a fast one, it's not far in.
Fire truck or something like that want to cross the creek? If a fire truck or something like that had to cross it, be... Think it's real safe?
No. I mean, it's a federal red pin, something like that to cross. We crossed with a dump truck, we used a cement wax one.
You do cross it with the dump trucks?
Yeah. The greater, just off that. I mean, we've got a fire truck in love with the water, or cement truck or something like that. And there used to be a way you could cross the creek and get over there if they had a fire, but that's all broken up in there now, and I think it's really in the street. You're crossing somebody else's land, maybe out of some accident. When you cross the creek, you just forget that. It is long to do.
I'm sorry?
It is long to do.
Okay. And about five years in the process?
Yeah, at least that much.
How many houses was it served?
One cemetery, is that right? Any other questions on District One requests? We, of course, I just got back from that conference magistrate District One from last week, there are, and I've got this two items layer on the agenda, but there are some options where I think it would be wise to check with Transportation Cabinet and see if we have a way forward there. I can't make any promises right now. I do think it's wise to explore those, that can cost us anything to ask questions and look into it, and I'm certain that the folks that live in the house appreciate you bringing it up, as do I, and I'm sure the rest of the court. Any other? Yes, sir.
I've talked with Frankford, too, and Bobby Lewis.
Bobby, yeah?
Yeah. She told me we need a first reading on this before they can make any move.
You're talking about like a financial commitment and first reading on the cost?
They want me to come and look till we get a first reading.
And what we'll have to do there, gentlemen, I don't know if you all can hear it down here, he said that he needs a first reading on this. We will need, before we have the first reading, we've got to have something that shows the costs that we expect for this. I don't know that number certainly off the top of my head. We've got an engineer that we can check with. We do need, if that's what we want, in order to get an engineer out there to do that, not... This is not committing anything without seeing the prices, but if you all do want to incur the cost of an engineer, go see it. We'll need a motion, second, and a prevailing vote to that effect.
Motion.
See that permanent water?
We would, all of that.
Need to do all that, take care of that stuff.
That's correct.
That's the best thing to do, is get an engineer.
Yeah. We've got a motion from magistrate District One to that effect. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the magistrate of District Four. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you, magistrate District One. Appreciate that.
I'd like to thank the city water. We had a truck there, we had a blast getting down there. The guys had to fix the water lines, working the floor, nobody shut it down. My hat's off to them, I tell you what. They done a tremendous job, saved the night, didn't flood the park, so my hat's off to them.
I didn't know that. Thank you very much.
The city county, they called them, as before, everybody come up and granted, and it happens, and you know, they took them, ten, fixed it, everybody looked very happy. I just can't think of the two guys that come out there and sit down in it and accept it. Water, I don't know the word, so I just can't think of it.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you for mentioning it. Letter I, if you'll recall, this is something we've seen before about a year ago. This is just simply to do again what we did with this new process through the state. Instead of it going all through Kentucky Transportation Cabinet now, a lot of this is going through the General Assembly. I'll just need a motion, a second, to push forward again what we did roughly a year ago on Humphrey Hollow in District Four. Is there a motion to that effect?
No, I'm not making a motion.
So moved by the magistrate of District Four, is there a second?
Second.
Second by the magistrate of District Three. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Moving into letter J, we have Kentucky Transportation Cabinet update. There are several pools of money here that we're looking at, that we hope to have access to in the next several months. Some of it is slow-moving, but we do hope that the county can benefit from some of those things. I would encourage you all, and we'll be meeting with the road supervisor, to go over a webinar sometime later this month, where we'll sit down and go over all of the new potential funding processes and pathways for Cumberland County. for Cumberland and other counties there. I'll update you more when I have specifics as to what we do qualify for, but I am optimistic that there's a lot of money out there that we have proven when we submit an application, we say what we mean and we mean what we say. Just wanted to provide that update. Letter K, under new business, I'll ask Mr. Joe Beatty, our mowing supervisor, if you would, please come forward. Now, we've had several questions from across the county on sides of roads and mowing. Could you update us, Joe, on where we are with that and why we are where we are with that, please?
About two hours, I'm like, like on, prior half, it's been done. And then we'll be moving to district four. We've had some breakdowns, of course, I had some sickness without two weeds that put us behind. We're doing what we can do to get the cop back up, but I realize this Johnson grass is growing, I mean.
And I'm sure any member of the court, Joe is readily accessible. Anytime you all need anything, make sure to let him know because contrary to popular beliefs, Joe can't be all things to all people all the time, everywhere. Let him know where you think it's the worst, that he can prioritize as mowing supervisor. I know it has been my experience with Joe that he will get to that in first order. So, Joe, I appreciate it. Any questions for our mowing supervisor, Mr. Joe Beatty?
What you done in this, it's looking good.
Yep, mine looking good, Joe.
I appreciate what you said.
Yeah, I love mowers, we'll be good for you.
I ain't gonna say nothing, I'm working today.
Appreciate that very much, Joe. Thank you. And we're glad that you're feeling better and back with us. Moving into letter L, under new business, fiscal court annual statement, settlement statement. This is provided to you by our county treasurer, Miss Stacy Thrasher. You've had a chance to review that. Are there any questions for our county treasurer? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve that as presented. So moved by the magistrate of district three, is there a second? Second by the magistrate of district two. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Last item of business written down for new business personnel. This is with the help of Judge Christie Costello, Judge David Williams, and a lot of credit to our county attorney, Mr. Coleman Hurt. They have been working with AOC, which is the Administrative Office of the Courts. That's the building that leases our Justice Center, a 21-ish thousand square foot facility just across the street. Each of those three individuals that I previously named, they have worked not just for weeks, not just for months, but several years from what I understand to try and up the allotment that AOC will reimburse Cumberland County Fiscal Court for our team members and supplies and their benefits over at the Justice Center. The previous amount that AOC would go up to, the ceiling here, if you will, was $5 per square foot. They have discovered in their research, we naturally have confirmed that it's all correct, that AOC is willing to up that from $5 per square foot to $6 per square foot. That's a big deal. And Judge, I will say, I know you and the county attorney are in the room. I appreciate all of your work on that, again, not just the last few weeks or months, but over the last several years. We appreciate it. At $6 per square foot, this means that that allows Cumberland County to increase, whether that's supplies or payroll for our team members that are over there that we in turn get reimbursed for. We have submitted to the Administrative Office of the Courts an official request asking with respect to pay if we increase the amount of the salary for the maintenance position, are we still within our $6 per square foot allotment? We are. We still have some room there, which is wise, and that has been conveyed in all of these meetings. All parties want to make sure, since you all took the appropriate steps and added to the administrative code last year, performance-based evaluations annually, you don't want to max out somebody's pay and then next year you can't give them a reward, an incentive, a performance-based pay raise for the work they've done over that previous 12 months. So this does allow a cushion there for each of the positions. In a conversation with Mr. James Cook, the potential recipient of the performance-based raise here in reclassification, he has indicated that this money naturally would be very helpful to him. This is something that my understanding, when he started, he started at a rather low rate of pay for the work that he was doing and where he was coming from, has worked his way up several times through several raises. And the judges, and I do not think I'm speaking out of turn here, the judges, county attorney, and several other members of the Justice Center staff have bragged on his performance, his work, the job that he does, and the way in which he does it. Getting some nods there of affirmation. So I do think that since AOC has said in writing that they will cover not only his benefits up to this amount, but also his base pay and continue to cover our supplies up to this amount, it would be my recommendation that we move forward tonight on a reclassification of pay and duties for Mr. James Cook. Now, you can't just give somebody more money and call it reclassification. James has agreed to save the taxpayers' money here long-term. We have a retirement coming up with one of our other Justice Center employees in October. James believes that he has now gotten a lot of the Justice Center up and running smoothly. He's developed systems and processes to keep it running smoothly. So a lot of those earlier years sets of tasks, he's not having to do daily now. He's got a lot of it where he can troubleshoot when the problem comes up. It's not an every day I've got to be on this same thing. James does believe that he can help in saving taxpayer money with that retirement. And instead of us having to hire a new full-time person in October, we could hire a part-time person, and James has agreed with this increase to take on some of those responsibilities, specifically, specifically the floor and the trash that is a daily occurrence of chores, that we would not have to pay a full-time person to do that. A part-time person could do that, and part-time employees are not subject to 100% paid health insurance and a retirement match. So you're looking at just the health insurance there alone, saving the county about $12,000. So that by itself is a big deal. With all of that, and I, James was here, I'd like to say on the record, James was here. He had to leave for some other obligations just a couple minutes ago. I hate that we did miss him. I know that he prioritized being here and would like to speak with any of you if you have questions. I know he'll be happy to speak with you. My recommendation, based on all that that I've just shared and the conversations previously with the judges and the county attorney, would be that we increase James Cook's pay through reclassification, having accepted these added responsibilities effective October the 14th, when the other employee retires, because that's when he'll start taking on those other responsibilities, at $20 per hour being reimbursed fully by AOC out of Frankfurt. Gentlemen, what questions do you have?
And it's at no cost for the Cumberland County people.
The cost that we incur will be reimbursed by AOC.
There would be an increase in, and I guess Stacy would know this, on the retirement portion that we would have to match on that.
That's correct.
But there would also be savings, substantial savings to the county. It's, you know, with the part-time employee not having to pay benefits there, that would probably over, overcome that, you know, still probably saving the money.
I agree with that, and we had also asked when, when they ran their numbers, we asked them to include the retirement, the additional retirement at the new rate of pay also. That's an excellent point. Any other questions from members of the court? Mr. County Attorney, I know you've been part of some of the discussions. Is there anything that I had failed to mention that I need to include here?
The only thing I would add is although I appreciate the credit, whether it's due or not to me, I really had very little due that Judge Costello, other judge, found the money and worked hard on this for months. And like you said, this is just money that Frankfurt has made available that if we don't use it, it's just lost, it's just left on the table. It's not something that we can use for anything and everything. It's dedicated for these purposes, and if we don't use it, it's just gone. So it makes sense to use it. Judge Costello deserves a lot of credit for working, helping find this money. And like I said, it's a good thing for the county because it's, if we don't use it, it's just gone.
This money will always be there, I mean, as long as.
As long as the Administrative Office of the Courts exists, I expect. But yeah, it's, they based it on square footage, and we were not utilizing the maximum end of that range. And so if you max out that range, we get more money, the Frankfurt money, that's our one.
Thank you very much, Mr. County Attorney. Any other questions from members of the court?
That was a good point. AOC was funding, who's left with the bill?
We've got bigger problems than, if the court system's gone at that point.
Any other questions from members of the court? And again, thanks to all those that worked so hard on this. This time, I will entertain a motion to allow for this reclassification. It would be effective in October when one retires, the other then therefore accepting a portion of those responsibilities, saving the taxpayers what would be the cost of benefits for that other full-time position. Is there a motion to that effect? At $20 an hour, is there a motion to that effect?
Motion.
So moved by the magistrate of district four, is there a second? Second by the magistrate of district one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Does any member of the court know of any new or unfinished business which should appropriately come before this meeting? Hearing none, we'll move into adjournment. The next regularly scheduled meeting is September the 9th, 2024, 4:00 PM Central Time, third floor of the courthouse. Gentlemen, is there a motion to adjourn? So moved by the magistrate of district three, second by the magistrate of district two. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes.